Oh my gosh.
Yeah, well, we have to start, but we're eight seconds early. I think that's okay?
Start a new topic?
No. I call this meeting to order. This is a work session for Syracuse City, February twenty seventh. Our, we open with public comment. This is a chance for anyone from the public to share with us something that we may not have on our agenda. Maybe want to consider in the future again that or comment on something that we're going to discuss tonight, so that we have the general opinion. This is the opportunity for anyone from the public that would like to make a comment. Okay, seemed done. I will close the imperson comment and we do have two that were mailed in.
All right. Dear members of the city council concerning the discussion of changing the allowable mixed use areas to be changed. I would like to request that in the town center overlay area that the mixed use be allowed for properties under five acres. As I understand the intent of the town center overlay, this area was intended to be zoned in a manner that promoted mixed use development. Assuming that some level of care was taken to design these projects. Last month, I attended this meeting where this subject was discussed. There have been some large apartment projects that have come into the city, which I believe have not been very conducive. To the intent of the mixed use zone and has given mixed use a bad taste. As a landowner in the town center overlay, I wish to bring my development into the city. Our project is just south of Walmart and is under five acreage. Our goal is to do mixed use the right way and to work with the city to create a project that is attractive and harmonious to the original intent of this zone. We have experience creating and integrating commercial and residential components that are ideally suited to this location. And which have the potential to be the high standard for future developments of this nature. While in general, I believe that mixed use is not ideal on properties over five acres. That is, as it is potentially takes up land that might be better suited for bigger box of commercials to enter. I believe that especially in the town center overlay where space is limited, that mixed use is essential. If mixed use is not allowed in this area for projects under five acres. The only development will be more small commercial buildings like what is already in the area and showing signs of vacancy along Allen Drive. Overbuilding anything, whether it be apartments or small commercial has the potential to negatively impact the fill of any city. Any further commercial development along Allen Drive would benefit by being paired with residential components, especially if done in a safe home manner. Which should be ensured by review of the architectural committee and city council as described. In ten point one of the city code regarding the town center overlay. We look forward to working with the city on our projects and the hope that you will work with us on bringing in a balanced development into this area. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Brent Lynn Schramm, Housher Center. Dear the city council and mayor, last month you started to review the mixed use zone and all the changes that were being proposed to it. I was happy to see you all on in more times to dig deeper into the changes so that you could be better prepared for a discussion on everything. Since this is a big change that could affect the look in the fill of the city. As stated at the last meeting, we have an application submitted to the city for mixed use that is being held up until this discussion and vote has taken place. I have emailed each of you personally over the last month with my thoughts on mixed use and the layout and design of our mixed use proposal on Allen Drive. I have done this so you can see how you can build an attractive project in the city that works on less than five acres of land. It also shows how large the buffer zones are per the code to keep mixed use and residential neighborhoods protected. Also, while the parking requirements that the city has in place, it keeps these projects from getting out of control with the residential portion. The layout I sent does comply with all the other requirements that the city is proposing. The only thing we don't comply with is the amount of land. We do feel there is a big need for mixed use zones on land under five acres to comply with the town center overlay, which we are under review access. To follow the intent of that overlay. If you do raise the minimum acreage of mixed use, we suggest that you only raise in areas not affected by the town center overlay zone. So that it can still comply with the design and intent of that overlay. Thank you for allowing your input regards to Lynn Schramm.
Okay. With that, I will close public comments and we will move on to planning items. I didn't see. Yes, you can please turn on that light.
Fifty cents.
All right, there we go. Noah, we come up. Our first planning item is a recommendation from the planning commission regarding the amendments in the city code for business park. Pertaining to body art establishment. We sent this back to them. Noah, go ahead and report.
Uh, yes. So I went to planning commission and they're forwarding a recommendation for denial, actually to not add body part establishments to the business park. Uh, the reason was that they felt that the business park zone was more of like a private office and maybe the body art shouldn't go in there. And so now it's back to you guys with the planning commission recommendation. We decided to do that.
We did that same thing I did last meeting.
So I have a question and you're gonna have to remind me. So when this came up, it was about that specific development that we rezoned business park. What was your, what was your main concern?
Because it was industrial at the time and that's the only place tattoo this closed can go. And we only have a very tiny area and we just took away more of that by turning it business park instead of giving it industrial. And now there's less legitimacy that they can have somewhere that they can go.
So I just wanted to bring up one thing because when we're talking about one specific property, when we already have a plan that's been submitted to one specific property. It doesn't seem like this particular property is conducive because it's a two-story warehouse space. So.
What are you talking about?
The business park, the ex-industrial that we're talking about made, that we just made business park, has a site plan that they've submitted. It's a two-story industrial open warehouse concept that could be used for different things. My question is, is that it's going to rent for a higher price because of the two-story, the big open space.
Flex space.
We have a mezzanine and a warehouse.
Regardless, regardless, we took away more space, is what I'm saying. Somebody, maybe a popular tattoo artist could have taken up some space there. Who knows? But we took away more space that this particular demographic can go to. So now we've got to figure something out for them. And that was the point that about it in that meeting is that if we changed it, it was less space. That they would be able to go to because they didn't want more storage.
Yeah, I'm not contesting that. And I, that's fair thing by we're having less space. But what I'm suggesting is the space that is being suggested for that particular area and why is not conducive to this particular use. Because it's going to charge a rent that's reflective of an open concept warehouse, which is always higher than.
Changed that though. Have we not?
No. It, it is still that open flex warehouse space like you've got across, you know, the way. So my point is, if we're changing it so that it can fit on this particular piece of land. We know that there's nothing that's really conducive to that use on this particular piece of land.
You're saying that because this is really the only business, business park in the entire city?
There's two and.
Okay, so I wasn't talking about any specific piece of land.
But I am. And, and I'm not trying to, I'm just putting out a point here. I'm reflecting that the particular piece of property in question is the only other place that this can go. If we want to make more spaces, then we probably ought to just designate future spaces, change it to industrial. Cause that's where it would fit. But again, I'm just pointing out one part of the equation. And that is that this particular spot doesn't seem to fit the use we're trying to put in there. And if we're changing this for that spot, we're, we're kind of lost there. It's my opinion. It's only my opinion. I won't put it out there.
I mean, when I, because, because when we were talking about it, we're like, okay, well, this is industrial. A, a tattoo parlor could attempt to go there, um, but we were trying to stop storage sheds. So we, we said, let's, let's, let's see if it makes sense to do it in another zone. So, so I, I mean, after I listened, after I, I talked to Kenneth Hellwell, who said he pretty much wrote the business park zone. He's like, it's really intended for a more professional class space. So I don't know the, I don't know the business zone is the best spot for it.
Can I ask a few hypotheticals?
Sure.
So business park space. So let's say I want to establish a law firm. What zone would I go for?
Business park or?
Wouldn't that also fit in commercial?
Or could fit in re-commercialed?
So, so I guess, please help me understand the difference between business park and.
Okay, I'm going to throw out one other question that goes with your question.
Okay.
And that is that, uh, recently in talking about how we might, uh, address or what needs to be addressed if we go take on the general plan. One of my questions was, do we really have any difference that we actually need a business park zone? Because everything that goes in it seems to fit somewhere else. So why do we have that? But to your point, what's the difference? If there isn't one, why do we have a separate zone for that?
I mean, I could speak to the different zones that we have and have experience reading through that. If you look at each zone, there's always a purpose, right, right. And there are different regulatory tools that you have that are involved in. Doctor the different variants in the city. And business park, you know, talks about office uses, but it's more like a research park. Like a, a law firm, that's probably more like a professional office. We have, of course, commercial. So if you look at every zone, there's first paragraph that says the purpose and they're all nuanced a little bit and they have permitted uses. Every zone will have different permitted uses. You know, the business park and the industrial have a lot of the same permitted uses. If you look at our zoning map, there are other industrial areas. So there's another industrial area by the pizza backyard at Allen. And then there's an industrial area by the side of that. And then I think top means it's an industrial zone area. And to, to the mayor's point, uh, on, I mean, I'm not really well versed in body art establishment and what their needs are. But usually, you know, like a normal tenant space in a strip mall is going to be like one hundred to fifty hundred square feet. These flex spaces are designed, I mean, they actually have a developed area and I heard that the, those spaces are actually, some of them are pretty least. But those spaces that have like a front service door and a mezzanine and a rear garage door, they're. I mean, I can't remember how many, I think these buildings like twenty thousand square feet. So I'd say like each spot is like five to ten thousand square feet. They're much, much larger. But there might be a tattoo place. It's a big popular one and they want to take down.
So I guess my point is, if we're, if business park is not professional office and business park is industrial light. I would argue that body art does fit in there. Well, whether or not they can go in this space or not, I still think it's applicable use for this area. And it's not, I don't think you're going to be having lawyers and, and professional office folks competing for the business park zone. So I feel like there's somewhat of a misrepresentation from the planning commission of what business park is.
I have a question. Why is, and this is very broad, but why is a tattoo parlor considered different than a hair salon or a nail parlor or any other body modification type service?
That's a fair question.
But why is it considered something so taboo while you can change your hair and your nails at any point? Because I don't, why do we have it considered something else?
Yeah, some, some cities have it as a permitted use. Like you drive up the road in Clinton.
Yeah.
There's like Old Gris Mill and then there's a tattoo place right next to, in the same strip mall. And, you know, I think from a land use perspective, some cities will identify that and have potentially experienced some unwanted activities. Like, uh, loitering or every, every use might have things. But like I've read through a variety of, uh, different regulations that cities do. Some cities have like bill limit and they'll say no, no more than one tattoo parlor per square mile. Or you have to be X number of feet away from a park or a school. Or they might limit like no consumption of alcohol or.
Oh, that's true. Especially being around military installation. If they didn't have those land use regulations, then they would be every hundred feet. You'd have a new tattoo parlor or strip club and most of the military installations around the country are like that. And we're very fortunate. They've got air force bases not. So.
Yeah, we really, I mean, we, we don't have, uh, a business like that in the city, you know, um. As we grow, I'm sure we'll have more businesses like that that, that we need to accommodate. We just really don't have any regulations on that. It's literally just listed as a permitted use in the industrial zone. So we have control of our zoning map, so we could handcraft that. Or if we wanted to really take the ball by our horns, we could not even more things concerning that, that use.
I think at this point, I think I'm willing to let it go into this zone because it's, it's, I don't think it's competing with the businesses that are there. I think it's a service that, that has an area and I think this.
I, I'm just going to say that I think Jennifer's asking a better question. What is different about this? Why is it not applicable in a general commercial zone? Because it is, I mean, this was created long before any of us were on council. And whatever they decided was different, I don't even know it since I wasn't there.
But. It's the evolution of body art is what it is. And now more people are doing it and it's accepted more than when it was when this was in. Did you see we had a lot of fish? Well, they've been a little too different. Artists trying to get into Syracuse and neither of them can because there's nowhere to fit otherwise except industrial. We don't got a lot of space for them.
I think the request here is, can we put it in an additional zone? And I think, I think the answer is yes. And I think, but let's start here and let's see where it goes. I don't think we want to open it up to every single zone just yet.
Well, and as the mayor said, there's only very little space in that business zone. So if they're not going to be able to acquire space there, then what are we really doing to also? There is more availability of this sort of space around Syracuse.
Yeah.
Yeah, these spaces are five to two thousand square feet. That's certainly not.
Why are?
It's a big space. Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, you end up with, why are we going to add it to one more thing that doesn't have any space for?
I'm obviously, that's what the request is right now. I think for the request, I'm okay with this.
What, why are we even doing this? Why don't we wait until somebody comes?
Because they have come and they asked and they can't put in an application because there's nowhere for them to get space.
Have they actually asked?
I don't have any applications.
I sent them to the business licensing.
Okay, because I think that.
And, and if you remember, when we first talked about this, both staff families, they both stated they were contacted also.
Okay. My point is, is that that's probably the right way to address the zoning is to have somebody have an appeal. It says, where should this go? It's not allowed in our city.
That's, that's what we were at is I sent them to the business license here. And then she's brought that up that there's really nowhere else for them to go. And that's what brought it here.
I, I could research that. I'm not aware of any applications, but there could be an inquiry where somebody just called and they were denied. You know, was that an administrative decision that could be appealed? I don't know. It wasn't like an official application that we received that we formally denied. Uh, but, you know, that person, honestly, if they're interested in coming, they, they, you know, their stance is that they can do that, try to find a place.
So let me suggest this. This is why I'm bringing it up because if we were to attack it from that angle, maybe the broader question finds the answer. Which is, if we have somebody interested in locating, you know, where is the right place for that to happen? Because I don't think this solves it. That's my only concern is that this particular spot doesn't solve this challenge. So this is kind of wasting an effort.
If we move it to business park and we've only got two potential spaces, that doesn't really give them, it doesn't give me more. If, if we keep it where it is until we have, uh, until we need to maybe solve it a little bit better or look at adding industrial.
So the way this happened is, of course, they didn't put in an application because they were informed that this is the only spot you can have this. So why apply for it if you're going to get told no? So that's why we're here. Why are they going to apply for it if they're going to get told no and it's going to get brought back to us again?
I accept that. Here's where I'm going from there. Past that point, okay. So we agree with you. You got there. This is the only place and this is no longer going to be available. Question is, if this isn't the right place, what is? And I think that's the real answer is if we think that this is a meat in our city and obviously it's, it's been brought forward, where is the right place? Cause I'm suggesting that this action doesn't solve it. That's all I'm saying.
I would vote no to this today because there is no application. If there was an application, I would look at the uses and beyond what the uses are to see what would accommodate this business.
I mean, we can put this forward to a vote. This is our chance to talk about whether we're actually solving the problem.
We're putting it in business to solve it. If we don't have space there, it just, I don't understand why it's different from any other body modification, any different.
And I think that's a fair comment.
I would argue that if it's a little different, only because how will you have to be to get a tattoo? So, but again, you, you can, there, there's also a vape shop in the, in the city hall.
Get it at sixteen in some states. Here in New York, you get your ears pierced out. It's a fair assumption.
But I would argue that's the difference between this and say a haircutting salon is that there is an age restriction on this.
That's fair.
Okay.
Even piercing, I don't think you have to, you have to be eighteen to get your ears pierced.
Yeah.
So the question comes down to this. Is there enough support to make this particular change? And should we put it on the next agenda? It is completely up to you. I'm just.
Where would it go?
That, that's the, I find moving it forward, but if it doesn't fix the problem, I don't want to waste that.
I don't think it fixes it. I don't think it's solved. It's just going through motions. I mean, I'm open to finding a solution, but I don't think that's the solution.
And I can understand why people don't want to put in applications and pay fees and things like that when they feel like they're just going to get told no. And that's literally the way this is played out. And when she called, she called me after and was like, there's really no point. There's nowhere for us to go there. Like it, it, Syracuse is where they wanted to be, but they just.
That's a good question. And you have to, I mean, maybe this will soften my sales tax revenue items. Um, when it comes to, um, haircutting salons and tattoo parlors and all of these, that's quite a service. Is there really any sales tax revenue for any of that?
Tattoo parlors have a sin tax.
There is a tax.
Sin tax?
Like cigarettes and alcohol.
Oh, I thought you meant like, I put a comma on it. So, so a sin tax, okay. But does the city see, I guess what's?
It's not a huge revenue.
Aside from the fact that it's a service we don't provide, is there an economic revenue that would, would drive us to fix this problem?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
No, in fact, even our general commercial zone limits in our services that are supposed to be.
Because they don't generate any revenue.
Because they don't generate something.
So there's not a huge reason to the taxpayer to try and solve this problem other than it's a service we, Syracuse currently does not.
So I'm feeling like we've heard a lot of the only, so the question is, do we go forward to a vote or do we address this in a way?
I think, no, just give it a little vote.
Sounds, sounds like a lack of progress to yourself.
No, it doesn't solve nothing. It doesn't.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and we'll move forward without going forward. Next item is recommendation from planning commission regarding amendments, section ten point.
Can I ask a question about that?
Definitely.
So if I email her back, since she set a, picked up in front of, plan in front of the, you know, work session.
I think all she needs to do is to say, I have, I'm a business owner and that I'd like to know where I can go. And I can put that on the agenda. Where does this belong? And that's, that's simple.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
I think that actually may be, get us to a solution. Okay. So the planning commission, ten point nine two pertaining to mixed use. And this is the question of, do we add a requirement for five acres? Who would like to start?
I like your statement that you said about the size and proportionate wise. Like a percentage of depending on the size of the acreage and not a set. Because, but I also think about all these old, I, I watched this video of this teenage girl recreating the tostada. And it made me realize that's literally what our, and our mixed use is doing. It's recreating these small town main streets that have businesses on the bottom and houses up top. And look where on there all acres.
Isn't it just not a food?
No, it's ADHD, man. You never know what's going to happen. So it's, that's how we're afraid of it.
You've got my attention.
There, there, that's all the patterns. So, but it, if we look at like historical main street cities, they didn't last long. So putting them along these, running these main street roads that are, it just doesn't feel right. It feels like it's just going to collapse on itself again.
I know what you're talking about. I'm not following.
Um, like how all didn't make dawn, Twenty Fifth Street used to be like the living upstairs and the downstairs businesses. Then Twenty Fifth Street almost collapsed in on itself there for a few years. And so many main street cities around the country just are closed down and boarded up. And because when the business goes out and you can't do another business in there, then you have renters out there and then things start crumbling. I don't know. I, I think the five acreage is good because it keeps it from ending up with the little businesses on the bottom and the one or two apartments up top. Wow, that's still my favorite. Well, I don't know. I think you need to go a little bit more.
I think when you get a minimum acreage, you get a little bit more options for business. It doesn't have to be just a small business. You could do small box. The, the reason why I like this change is that, um, when we created the mixed use. It was for the specific purpose that we would get more business. And in fact, what it's been used as is an apartment zone with a token business. So by having a bigger area mandatory, you are forcing them to do more significant business instead of just a token hair salon. We have one.
separator. You don't have to end up with them stacked on top, housing on top, the business on the bottom. If you have housing separator.
Or some mixed use.
Over, yeah.
You know, the ordinance does allow that development pattern.
Yeah.
And then you can stack the way you can go.
Out, yeah. But the bigger, the more likely you don't have to stack.
When we look at very small potential plans, like a one acre or a half acre, you know, what we get is you get apartments with one token office in it. And that doesn't really change our outcome if what our goal is, is economic development. So the purpose of this zone is to bring more economic development. It has to be big enough that the economic development matters over a one business that could actually exist in some areas.
So the point was, is I think they should be kind of together. The minimum with the bigger you get, the more that the percentage.
Yeah. I think we need the percentage.
Office fifty, fifty, three hundred and thirty, we'll read that big separation gap is fifty, a hundred. That's massive.
I still think it needs to be fifty, or what is it? Whatever it is. I think the center one needs to be one fifty.
Yeah.
I, I like having a minimum acreage and I, and I think. I'll, I like having a min- minimum acreage and I and I think I think our our town center is is prime for straight commercial development. I mean, we've got a West Davis highway that has just come in. Those I I don't know whether the assertion that it's all gonna sit vacant forever. Um, we've got a lot of development happening, a lot of new traffic that's gonna come to our city with that, and we've got the temple going in.
I have all my K's go friends telling me now drive to Syracuse more because it's closer than the Laton one.
It's easier to get to.
Easier to get to and they said it's, it's a nice one.
It's near, yeah.
Yeah, so I think the vote is gonna happen. I do not think this cycle is the road.
And and I agree. I think our percentages, our ratios are still too low.
What is the tool that we use to infill the properties that need to be filled that are smaller than five acres?
Well, so we have commercial for one, if it's commercial, and if it's not, we have PRDs.
Which has a minimum acreage of a three acre.
It's down to three acres, which pretty small when you talk about mixed housing. You can always fit in an individual property as long as four or five acres. But, you know, if you're in a commercial zone, it doesn't make a lot of sense to build residence.
But the question is, so let's say that on a three acre, they wanted to do a PRD. Does a PRD allow for commercial?
It does not, but is PRD in the middle of the commercial designated area the right thing?
That's what I'm, I I'm just saying. So, for example, we know of several spots along Antelope that would fall less than below this five acres. Um, we've heard public comment. Uh, and Noah's actually brought this up. What is the tool for that landowner to develop? Right now I'm hearing it's only commercial.
It is in the middle of our city center overlay. I'm, I think that the city center overlay is put in place to establish more commercial, not to establish, it was to try and make conducive where you had small developers developing next to others. You wanted them to be cohesive. So you had a standard overlay that said, let's make them light unto each other, playing by a similar set of rules.
Can't we please that though as a council and look at that on a project by project basis? And decide if it's four point two acres, but yet it fits. Um, why can't we just approve it on a piecemeal basis?
It is an option. I'm not saying it's in.
So so what is the need for a minimum acreage if there's the ability to do that and accomplish what you want anyway?
In the past year, we saw a one acre and an even half acre proposal. And they were ridiculous and probably shouldn't have even come forward because they were way too small.
So we chill.
Well.
But it opens the door for those to come forth, come forward and say, we think this is a good option for this. Where I I think when we talked about because we're, I I think we waste people's time because I don't think we'd ever we wouldn't approve it. So that was the point behind coming up with a minimum acreage is we didn't want people coming with these one acre lots and proposing mixed use, knowing that we were just gonna say no.
It sounds like we have a larger than, and I can understand a half acre and acre and what about a larger parcel? Like, we're dealing with a live one, it sounds like. What's the issue with looking at that live project and giving it the the weight and and assess the merit of the project?
Uh, if you wanna go smaller, that's an option and it it would allow for something like that. I think the key, in addition to the waste of time, you waste people's resources because in the acre one, somebody came forward and said, look, I'd spent a considerable amount of money paying architects and designers and doing all this stuff. Had I known you were just not even gonna think about it, I wouldn't have done all that. I didn't spend the money. Now, sure, it's a it's a choice they have to make. It's not our responsibility to get people to avoid an attempt like that. But if we do know that we have boundaries, we should be public about them.
And don't, and don't we have minimum, don't we have minimum acreages in most of our?
Almost every zone.
Every zone we we set for some minimum acreage so people know.
And if it's something that comes up that's almost right at it, that's something you would contest and like, hey, this, you know, like you were saying, bring it before the city council and we make an exception for it. Is it something that we can do when I? What was the word I wanted to put, I didn't.
No, I agree with that.
Thank you.
We're working together here too. So if, if in fact, we look at the city zone and we say, okay, the real number is four. We can make the number four, but honestly, you know, as I look at the portions that are available, we are asking for commercial for the most part. They could be subdivided and something residential could go on a back path if that's if they wanna provide for access. But the bottom line is, we do know that we want significant commercial that is next to the overlay zone. So that's why I'm proposing.
That's why I like it as well. At least in any way.
It's okay to have different individuals. It is, I'm just, that's, that's where we just came from. So you don't have to be finalized tonight, but I I would have to make the decision in the next year. Cause that's what we need to do tonight is that we're good to bring it to a vote, however that divides.
So we're talking a lot about the minimum acreage. Now, it sounds like it's, it's already split. Um, do we wanna talk about the the one story, two story, three story commercial, uh, commercial requirements?
Sure, you can, cause it's an open zone.
I would like to move one hundred to one fifty.
Okay, how do others feel about that?
That way, at least it looks linear. Right now, it just looks like if you try and do three stories in here, dang it, you're I I I feel like it's a little more linear.
Okay, so again, the question, do others feel the same? They do, then yeah, we don't. Okay, so it sounds like that one's got the support. So back to the first question, because it is really divided. Are we to a point where we could make a vote in the next meeting? You don't have to tell me what that vote is, just that you're ready to make a vote.
Yeah.
I'm I'm ready to vote. I'm ready.
Alright, so we'll put it on the next meeting and it will fall where it falls according to the council. Alright, I'm gonna move us on. Discussion regarding possible modifications to Syracuse City Code. Section eight point ten point nine pertaining to fee and lieu and water shares for retail versus office and uses. Now, this is something that I I brought forward just because we're dealing with a significant development we all know about. The question is, if they have a large development that we wanna see in there, that is economic development, do we want to make it less actual shares? They're still gonna have to buy the water, but they'll have to buy some from the conservancy. The challenge, the reason why that matters is because if you buy it from the conservancy, we pay a higher price after about twelve years. We don't pay it in the beginning, but after about that point in time, you do start to pay a higher price.
With the, with the new changes from Weber Basin, we can actually buy upfront, so so it's
So it's not.
So it's just the the own entity going forward.
Okay, so that would make this not.
That just barely changed.
So, I guess if you had my question, it's just because it's on the agenda. Um, when it comes to a business, do they do they, I don't think they have the same amount of, I believe the word is irrigable.
Yes.
Space as say, a home.
For a percentage.
Percentage wise, so.
And their only thing that based on what they actually have is irrigable acres is a horrible word.
So, so with that.
That's why I just say irrigational.
I don't think that's actually a word. And needing water. So, is there a reason why we put the same same requirement on land that will largely be a parking lot?
Well, yeah, because there are only water on irrigable.
Their only requirements for the stuff that gets watered. It is not required to put water for parking lot.
So I would argue that if they're doing zero scaping, they don't need any water shares. Is that, is that the statement we're making with that?
No, they still need water. Cause they do have to have vegetation up to break up the blacktop.
And and this, this point is, they still have to bring the same amount of water, it's just in lieu of versus actual shares.
Because some of these parcels that are gonna go commercial don't have water. So it is, it is hard to find, and here's the change. This is, I have dug really deep into this over the last eight months, trying to solve the problem for one particular development. And the problem is that people are now able to retain water shares without the property. And then they put them, there is a state law that says if you don't use them within so many years, you lose them.
You got to that.
Uh, so to keep them, they're putting them in a rental bank and it's managed by the water district.
That's true.
They're just renting them out here and there, but the problem is, is that you can't a city can't live on rented water. A city has to have actual shares. So that we can't say one year, there's none for rent. I guess you go vacant and you're all in the plant stock, so.
Your farmer retirement plan, water shares.
It kind of is.
There, there's ranchers that got like six water shares that they're just sitting on because they're just waiting, they bash out on rent for the guy and make trust funds to sell their kids. And it, there will come a day. Cause water gets more expensive every year.
Water is starting to be more inflated cost than property.
In lieu is not real. The shares are real. So whenever you have a water shortage, your shares are what matter. The in lieu can always get shut off.
In lieu, we buy shares.
For water, see, right?
No, no, we permanently, the city does go and permanently buy the shares.
Yeah, there, it's, it's blocks. It's not really a share, but it's water.
But I guess what I'm saying, I'm okay with this, not because it's a commercial, significant commercial, but I'm saying, I don't see this as a significant impact on our water shares. Even though we know we're in a deficit, it would have really been nice to have them, but there is the whole idea of irrigable space.
Yeah, I was just doing businesses more like, okay, well, we're gonna be way more great.
Well, the thing is, they're, they're not using the water.
But they are because they're only using the water, they're only doing the water shares that are necessary to irrigate the green space that they have. They're not turning over shares that account for their parking lot.
Jennifer's correct here.
No, I agree.
Oh, yeah, so, but I guess the point really is, is that every little thing when it comes to economic development, especially with big ticket economic development, every little thing is a factor in where they decide to go.
Yeah.
And if there's only gonna be one in a region of any type of store, we don't wanna lose it because they can't get water.
I'm okay with this as as risen, just because I don't want everybody to come in and say, well, I don't want free water shares because we do need water shares. So I don't think we could do that. So I guess, well, I'm okay with this only because of the other reason actually.
And if we were to feel like after a few years that we didn't really know about our commercial and this is no longer considered an obstacle, we could change it. But right now, we have a very key opportunity that we can get some major significant commercial around freeway exit and we're competing with other freeway exits. So I'm looking to alleviate that roadblock lines up.
Why is the fifty percent in previous?
Uh, well, it was two thirds. And so this would be less. I was thinking, I was willing, we had to pick something to start with. You can, you can go to forty, you can go to sixty. I went to fifty because some of these don't have water attachment, can't get it. I thought if we may at least bring half, then we're not as bad off, but.
I mean, it could be higher.
It could be higher.
It could be zero. For, for residential, it's only two thirds, right? It's, I think it's some seven percent.
Well, that, that was more geared.
So we're looking to do different, more breaking out of the law.
But the issue really becomes, is there access for these developers to get the water? If there isn't, then they're out.
Yeah.
So there has to be an avenue to do it. So what is the harm in bumping that up a little bit?
The fact that they will not get it. There is no effort.
No, I mean to, to increase this from the proposed fifty percent higher. What, what is the harm in even having it a little bit higher if there's not water available? Right.
You're right. There is no harm except for, you know, in this process over the last eight months, we were able to pick up a share here and a share there. Still didn't make up the the big number. But if it's that hard to get a share of water, if if they could unsprint the half, then maybe we wouldn't be waiting another year or two for them to come in because they're still working on water.
So, so a lot of the, a lot of the shares, that when we're talking about shares that the city can't get, those shares are typically from original project water, we call it, from decades ago. And the price, the annual assessment is is much lower because it's older water. Um, when we go and we buy water from Weber Basin with the fee and lieu, we're you, we're buying from new water, which is newly developed, those projects, recent projects. And so the annual assessment is much more expensive.
So that's why we wouldn't want to take it higher necessarily.
That's, that's why you may, you just wanna consider a balance. Uh, uh, it is more expensive. It's not as, as expensive as it used to be. But it's still more expensive than the original share.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with this. We, it's a tool to help us with economic development. It's an, it's a starting point. I would be fine with it.
I do want exercise. It's very awesome.
I agree.
I'm okay with you putting in restrictions and we get to decide if it's significant job producing.
But the fifty percent number is the amount that they can purchase in lieu.
Yes.
Yes. If it's sixty percent, then they can purchase sixty percent. If there's no shares available privately, they can go up to sixty. So I, I'm fine with the fifty and I think it maybe should be a little
I think you're just flipped. The way it reads, if you were to make it a sixty percent, they would have to produce sixty percent of shares and could only buy it for you. So if you, if you're, what you're suggesting is we go even lower, then we may make this number forty and allow them to buy sixty percent.
Any lower than fifty, if there's not
If I'm flipped, I think, I think the developers should be able to purchase water
Up to?
Up to a higher amount if it's not available privately to get. So if I misread it, I'm still.
We're looking for a lower number then.
Yeah, we're at, we're at thirty three now. Fifty that's allowed to buy, that's talking about allowing to go to fifty, but maybe that number's higher, but like Brody's saying, the, the downfall of letting them go higher is that long term, the only fees, so that water you will toss is gonna be more than that.
Then, but they're, sorry, they're incentivized, the developers is incentivized to purchase at a
private rate if they can get it.
If they can get it, yes.
But if they can't, then the city after so many years ends up covering the cost of the increase of the in lieu.
Once they pay for the water, you know, it's ours and ten years later, we're not going back to the original developer house.
Yeah. So now we have to start paying it. But if we get the share, then the share covers the water itself and indefinitely. So there's no extra fee later on after the developers, somebody's dollar.
And both, both of them are indefinitely. So when we buy the water, it's a contract indefinitely.
We need to.
To get that water. So they can adjust, they can adjust the amount of water per unit based on how much water we receive that year.
Even on the old shares.
Yeah, I know that, but the cost of in lieu.
Yeah.
So are we good with fifty or do you wanna go down to forty? I think it's gotta be at least close to half, but. Okay, so we'll put this on for a vote in the next meeting. Uh, the next one. Discussion regarding possible modifications to Syracuse City Code ten point three point twenty pertaining to interior garage proportions. This was brought up as a question at our last meeting and we're now open to discussion. The one thing I thought about since this is, I'm actually affected by this. I have a protrusion into the middle of my garage and I can only park a shirt and bar up there. But what I thought about when I was thinking about us trying to regulate that, we only get that at the point of building. We get, what people do once they build, they could build anything beside your garage. Heck, my kid built a skate ride in my garage at one point, and I pulled it out because I wanted my car in there, but you know.
But this is a requirement to a building, not for.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand. My point is that a homeowner could drastically change this. We can't.
I guess, I guess I don't get it really, because ultimately, in my mind. The parking concern issue is the driveways that we're not overcame to a sidewalk, so we, we did that last time.
We did that, that's.
No, I know that, but what I'm saying is, you could make whatever garage, we could make whatever garage size we want. We could say nine by whatever. It doesn't stop people from filling that with their crap and still parking in their driveway.
Some people don't, we're not, you're not considering it for all the people that fill it with crap, you're considering it for the people who. Buy a house and wanna park their vehicles in.
But isn't that part of just buying anything, if you make sure it meets your requirements?
And what if later on, you buy, have to buy a new vehicle for a work job or something and you're required to buy, you need a truck for, you started a new business? You wanna buy a new house just to fit in there?
Nine by twenty would not fit a truck. The twenty foot.
Two hundred sixty-six inches long is the longest vehicle, it's an F three fifty, two pretty long bed, so I remember. That is, is how long, your longest vehicle for anybody that's having a personal vehicle at home is gonna be.
I don't think we need to guarantee that now three fifty will fit in your garage.
That's twenty-two, over twenty-two feet, yeah.
And is that why, is that's probably what the twenty-two foot on the recommendation was?
Well, the, the thing is with a twenty-two foot, I think they assume you can walk around the car. So an average car is fifteen feet long. So with a twenty foot like it is here, um, that would give you approximately two and a half feet, both behind the car and in front of it. I think that's reasonable. Like, if you put a truck in here, you're not gonna be able to walk around there. But I think we don't have to require. Me too. So I thought this nine by twenty, I thought this was a reasonable requirement that allows for them to. To have somewhat of truth in advertising, you can actually fit a sedan in your, in both sides of your garage. You shouldn't have to require to buy a, a bug.
Or six extra shelves to put crap on, you know, whatever, but your car will fit.
Uh, look, I'm, I'm okay with however.
I like the change.
I was not sure that it, it, it changed things. I think builders are gonna come back and say, well, here's the other part. The reason why I have to have stairs in my, uh, garage to get to my main level. Is because basements where I live are, can't go down that much deeper, we already have water table. So you may be with this requirement, telling people below the block. You just can't have basements, or you gotta have a third car garage in order to make this work.
No, I think what this means is that, um. That you'll, that the garage left to be two feet wider.
Well, really it's to holding developers accountable. Listen, you advertise two car garages, make it where two car garages fit. If you're gonna build in our city.
They keep shaving off.
Exactly. Add some, well, it is fifteen feet, but before the stairs, okay, well, now my car doesn't fit, dude, so that doesn't help. Yeah.
Now with the, it's smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller.
But make sure people can actually fit what you're advertising.
I don't think, I, I don't think it's overly punitive, I think most of our garages would probably fit this, but there are a few that might not, which is helpful.
I, I'm okay either way, I think.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not.
Once you grab a big truck, you go learn to fix the garage.
I do.
Well, she's got a big garage.
When I bought a house, I wanted a big garage, so I made sure it did. I wasn't like duped into buying my house, I knew exactly how big my garage was.
You know?
I mean, extending the garage by two feet is not going to make the houses cheaper.
It's just the newer homes that are gonna be built, it's the newer homes, that's, that they keep shaving and smaller and smaller, everything's getting smaller.
But you're in, get over there and, yeah, and driving around over there.
And two by fours are not two by fours, I'm just saying.
What happened to two by sixes?
It's just, it's just the shrinkage, so it's just.
Yeah, but if somebody has the garage and packs it full of crap, like. Um, and so the garage can't be used, yet they have parking in their driveway that's sufficient. Then how does that analogy change?
A, a, an already built house, it doesn't affect, this is only.
Right, but, but, but even going forward with that, if there's adequate parking even without the garage, then why do we care what the garage? Does?
Because some people wanna park in their garage.
Well, then park it.
Then they choose to look at that before they buy a house.
I just don't understand what.
What if they buy a new car after they bought the house? And they would like it to fit in their garage, but now it can't. Not everybody piles stuff in their garage, we just assume everybody does.
I guess we're saying that if you make choices, if you make a choice to buy a car that doesn't fit in your garage currently. You made that choice. If you make a choice to buy a house, it doesn't fit the car you own in your garage, that's a choice.
You make a choice to sell the house and advertise two car garage, two full-sized cars should fit it in.
But, but, I'm just saying, but also remember, every time we make a change, the impacts. The building, they've gotta change blueprints, they've gotta add additional material costs, building costs, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna decrease costs of. Of, of what it costs to buy a one.
I don't think the conflict is anything, I, I vote no. Only get two.
I, I like it how it's the twenty, you know, the twenty. I think it solves a lot of the problems of the stairs being in the way that a lot of people have.
Again, tonight, all I really need is to know that everybody's ready to vote, and it doesn't matter which way.
Yep.
You know, that'll pan out in the next meeting, but is everybody feel like a, okay, we're moving on. All right, so, um. Continued discussion, uh, request from, uh. Redevelopment agency incentive for flex industrial project located on State Road. SR one ninety-three and one thousand, this is the request that the city buy the median. And, um, I find it an unusual request, it's never been asked to affect. The street that a project is on that is already built. Doesn't mean it's not appropriate, it's just, it's unusual, so. Question is, should we pay for the median so that it adds a right in right out? And, where's yours?
I need a, I need a, cause we've, I've only dealt, I didn't only double, but in one of these. Or do we have, do we have budget funds available already in this RDA, or we still need to accumulate funds to? Yeah, I remember last, last time we were talking about this, this is within the, uh, let's say, actually an E D A. Um, there is not any money in the E D A. But, so as the R D A board, so you take off your city council hat, you throw on your R D A board hat.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you manage all of the project areas within the city R D A. And it is legal to take a loan or borrow from other project areas. And we do have another project area that has over a million dollars in it, so we could legally borrow from that, but you do have to pay it back.
Within the project.
And this is almost done, so that's the concern is, there's only four more years.
Yeah, is will this make enough money to pay it back?
So that's if, you know, say they do the improvements and they send us the, the bill and we give them a loan, so. The other way that we could do this is that we could say, well, to help soften the blow, why don't you go ahead and build your buildings? And when your buildings start generating property tax, then we'll, we'll return that back to you and it'll be over time. And, and there's no comment of a specific dollar amount, but, you know, we did some math and we think it's probably about ten thousand dollars a year. And, you know. Uh.
Four years left.
No, sorry, I got confused, that's the other project area. That, this one, you know, you might get close, cause there's, there's actually four buildings that they're building. So they're, uh, you know, they're, what they're requesting would probably be close, but. It doesn't affect any of the other financial commitments that the E D A already. So that would, that would be the one that I'd recommend you, if you wanted to do it.
I agree with that. But, but it would be over time, like, we, we just reimburse it to them.
Build buildings, pay your taxes, then.
Yeah, we'll give it back, and I, I think this also increases the land value. I think, ha- anytime you can get another in, ingress off of a, a main road, I think it increases your property value. So I think this one is a net gain.
It'll make it easier at least for good and bad.
Yeah.
It's, just one other side to this, and again, that'll be fine, but. If someone were to make the same request somewhere else and use this as an example and say you've already set a precedent, you know that's not true. But we all may not be here when they try to claim precedent, so. Somebody might say, oh, you've done this before, I guess we have to do it again. So the question is, are you good with that?
No. I, I. Make the decision on the America Beach project.
It's fine.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't think. Use that, oh, we've done this before, it's case by case.
There are other places on one ninety-three where this could happen, that's all I'm saying.
In, in the new E D A that's coming.
Yes. It's a, maybe it will be a C D.
Whatever you wanna call it, the new test.
Hey, so you're, all right, so we're good to move forward? We'll have to be in agreement that one borrow is from the other, and that'll have to be a part of it.
No.
Well, no, we're not borrowing.
Okay, but we'll repay over time.
Yes.
Okay?
I don't like robbing Peter with a big bar.
Okay, all right, and we're good to go. The next one is continued discussion request for. Reach our R D A initiative for flex project near Amel Drive and Bluff Ridge Road. This is the property that is back behind, that has no access at this time.
Okay, so I, I talked to this developer and he wasn't asking for the whole two hundred and eighty-one. He was seeing if the city could help in any form with that, so whatever.
I'm willing to give him the same deal.
The, would it cost for not an evaluation of it, like even if it was just the fifty-something thousand, that would still be helpful to them. So it wasn't a request for the full amount, because especially since there's only like four years left on that, that, well, just what the city could help.
Cause, cause we can't use the E D money once, once this thing is over, and then, so, I, I'm in favor of the same deal, there's. If, if you, if you build a building that's worth a lot of money, you get lots of property tax, we'll overturn it back to you. If it, if you build a storage shed, which can, well, I guess it could.
But it doesn't generate anything.
It doesn't generate anything, he gets nothing.
Okay, others?
Well, so this, this, but this is saying, you're saying he's not requesting the full two eighty-one.
No, um, just whatever this is. Just what the city would be willing to help with, especially since, when that V A N.
I, yeah, I'd be willing to do something in this case, but not a whole two eighty-one.
Yeah, I, I thought the fifty, fifty-one or fifty-two, that whatever it was was reasonable, that to help with that, build that up.
I will say this, I, I.
It's fifty-seven, fifteen.
Whenever we lay out a property that you have to get to in an odd way down one, one road that only accesses one property.
That's gonna be a blue collar property, boy.
That's what I'm bringing up, is it has the potential to be a hotspot for that activity. Whenever you have something that's way off the.
How do you correlate that activity with the collar?
That's exactly, okay, so I did.
I mean, it was gonna be something where there's gonna be a lot of working class folks in there doing manual labor type stuff.
Well, that could be it, and it could be well regulated, or it could be that property that nobody can find, so it doesn't get. Occupants and it becomes.
Well, I think more likely it's gonna happen is, um. What is this, a RV rental next to it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think that ends up becoming more, and this, this would actually make that land a little more valuable, because now it has utilities. And, and my hope is that instead of an RV parking lot.
You can't have any buildings there, cause it's something.
Oh, you're right.
And that's why that building.
You're right.
I mean, if you look at the close-up, they are right on the.
Yeah, they, they are.
All their corners hit the edge.
So that's why I believe that they were asking for that help is because they got pushes or something.
Thing is, right now, the value is nothing of this land, because of where it is. I, I think this at least allows a potential, I, I don't know if there's even pencils for them, if. If all we do is say, look, we're gonna reimburse whatever you want, because this land's not gonna be worth much. But if you.
Well, I'm not a call, and, and I'm not saying that it definitely goes into the other side. Say it has potential, because it, whenever you have a road that doesn't, is not a regular traffic road, you.
It's more like, this is like a great spot, or like what was written in your landscape and fix it. Or like a mechanic or something like that, that's down on that road.
And it allows us to fill that space where something.
So I'm okay with that fifty-seven, eighteen, that your evaluation broke down over the next four years, I would, I'd be comfortable with that.
Now, as member of the R D A board, don't you get a vote?
Yes, uh, well, maybe.
I don't know, I wasn't sure.
Doesn't matter. I, I'm, I'm willing to go with the rest of you on this, I'm just bringing up points of consideration.
I couldn't remember.
It, it's not gonna matter, this.
I think the fifty-seven.
But again, it's not a guaranteed, it's like, whatever they build there, and whatever it values at.
Whatever it's cooped in tax.
Whatever it's cooped in taxes for that spot, because right now, we're getting nothing for it.
Yeah.
And I don't, I didn't anticipate on ever getting anything for it, so this is.
Better than nothing.
So in five years from now, we might actually get something out of that lot.
Yeah, a little, a little back.
Does anybody feel any different? Cause it seems like we have, okay, so we're gonna move forward and it'll be voted on appropriately. Um. Discussion regarding wildland fire program and adjustments for staffing, knowing you're out. Yeah, sorry.
I bet you would love to get this conversation.
So let me just, let me just bring this discussion up, because there's, there's a couple items here, and the purpose is. Uh, if you're okay with these modifications in idea, then, uh, we can put this on the business section for a vote. Uh, on the changes on our risk of position.
But what this doesn't do is authorize them to go hire these people, all right?
Not, not, not yet, but when, uh, when you vote on.
Agree.
Yeah, but when you vote on it at the market meeting, you could, that would be yes.
So we could do it for this season if you are reluctant, you know, you know.
Or we could try to do it for this, even if it's not guaranteed.
Yeah, but we could find somebody, yeah.
So I think the decision has to be made whether the council wants to move forward with the wildland program.
What are we?
Well, no, wait a minute, I wanna be clear, we say going forward, but we could just shift the sheet, there is an option. Which we may only have that option if you get front people, so.
Exactly. What does this bring us revenue-wise versus what it's gonna cost us to hire somebody?
Usually you have a net gain of several hundred thousand dollars.
I didn't think it was that big. It wasn't like a hundred twenty-nine thousand or something that you're getting for revenue?
Fair point.
That's what I'm saying, we're gonna have to hire a full position. So I still think my question's a fair question, what's the difference between what we're gonna gain in revenue versus what it's gonna cost to staff that?
So let me explain how the wildland program works right now.
Okay.
Wildland program right now, the state reimburses us. For the wages and benefits for the people we send out at the time now. So when we hire seasonal, and these are all seasonal positions, except for.
It's just during the time that they're out.
Yes, yes, yeah. During the time they're out, we also get reimbursed for, uh, an hourly rate for the vehicle that goes, so it depends on the type of vehicle we send. We also get reimbursed for fuel, and we get reimbursed for food, and per di, per di and typically. Rates that are out there for them while they're gone. So that's only while they're deployed. Last year, we were about a hundred and twenty thousand in revenue. Prior to paying out anything from the program. So, um, there's been some years that we've done over three hundred thousand. And I think the, the, the lowest amount since I've been with Syracuse City's been about maybe thirty-nine thousand. And we're just basing it off of the wildland year and, and the availability of the staff to. Was allowed, because previously, our engine bosses were full-time employees with the S R A, you know. And whether they were able to go for fourteen or sixteen days at a time was their decision. And so sometimes they weren't able to go, they had family things planned, so we weren't able to take fires.
So, I mean, that's, that's my main question, does it make sense financially to try and staff that position? Or does it make sense to wait and say, okay, we've got some people that are willing to get training, that are already on staff? And then wait a year or two, whatever it takes to.
Right, and that's definitely something we can look at, or looking at probably one to two years to get people trained in that. But then we run into the same problem that we're in now eventually. As they either move on or promote, or, and we're continually trying to get that training. And in order for people to maintain that certification, we gotta send them out, so. For us to get four or five people in their department, engine boss qualified, would not be easy to do, because. We would have to be sending them out pretty regularly to maintain this.
So if we wanna do it, we're almost always gonna be in a position where we might have to hire somebody to fulfill that.
Well, it might, and, and what we're looking, what we're looking now is just hiring the seasonal, so we're not looking at hiring the same time person. It's a person that would be here for the seasonal time, which is set for six months. And they would come in and they would have a twenty-hour work week. Um, and then.
And then deploy.
And when they deploy, then it will be paid if they're all the time right or how that things are now.
We can use the part of employees when they're here and.
It would be no different than the way we use the seasonal wildland positions now. The only challenge is is whether or not there's a tight opt there for somebody who's qualified as an engine boss to come in and take the seasonal job like that.
So this would make it to where someone being in that position during the season, then we could take more fire calls to send them to? And that would be more of a revenue.
Right, if the fire calls are available, yeah, and if they're not out.
That's basically, so your question's kind of based off of mother nature, we should ask. Well, when they want to go, right, you're not.
Right, you know, and we don't, we don't force that.
So you're hiring aboard that seasonal spot. That's your whole point, is you're waiting for a fire call.
The difference between the full time or full term full time, yeah, we don't force them to go, but if it was a seasonal position, that's what their job is.
Yeah.
Um, in the past, when we've made, the three hundred thousands, when we had two engine bosses and two seasonal crews, and we could send two crews at a time. They'd come home for a couple days and turn around and go right back out, so, uh, I think there was one year that, uh, the Dan Holman, one of our seasonal guys, was gone for a hundred and ten days.
He loved it.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you can only train during the season for wildland issues.
And part of the training in order to get that, there there are certification courses that have to take, but the rest of it's on the job training. So we're working with the state of Utah right now, with their wildland team, and I've also been trying to work with late city employees to see if we could send staff out with them to get the training, which would be non-reversable, that would be completely on us to prepare to that call, but.
I feel like doing it this way is actually more cost effective for us, because we can get more of a revenue from it, rather than just having people on full-time staff that we can only occasionally send when they've got nothing going on. Like this way, we have people that we can send and they bring money back with them.
Well, and it is challenging, you know, when we send a full-time person, we've got a faculty, yeah.
Yeah.
And the way staffing has been lately, that is also challenging as well, right?
Yeah, that's concerning, we're short staff right now, so.
This not only supplements our existing staff, but also, how often do you have these people feed in straight into the fire station in the future, like the younger guys that go each boss?
Seasonals.
They often will end up, I mean, it's also recruiting method. That's what I thought. I'm I'm in favor of this.
It's more lucrative than the way we do it now.
So the other issue was on the admin professionals.
That seemed like a non-issue, it's it's.
Yeah.
It's a title.
Yeah, we're just changing it, they basically do the same thing, so we're making it so it's just one position, just different levels of the same.
So we will move on, tell you, Aaron, Presto, you are up, do not start popping. Chad, please. Yeah, we put on a tie for this, you guys do that for us.
Look at you, Chad.
I said that every time I come, I'm sick or something, I think we're allergic to. Chad's aware, he's gonna take over, even if I pass out in the chair, so we're good. Hey, um, for the Parks and Recreation Department, for those of you that don't know, I'm not sure if you guys know Chad, it's Chad's now, he's been a significant. We'll start off with our mission statement. We are committed to providing citizens with a wide variety of recreational opportunities, supported by our parks, personnel, and our facilities. Our goal is to deliver superior programs and services that meet the needs of the community and cost effective matter. Um, you guys have done this the last couple months, you kind of know what we're doing here, we're we're gonna go over our vision statements. Um, and the categories that go with those, and then we'll talk about future. Our first vision statement, we've been given by the council, Syracuse City provides parks and open space for active and passive recreation with equipment and space for a variety of activities. The community center is also equipped for multiple purposes to host a variety of activities. Um, we wanted to kind of update, especially because, um, a lot of you were on the council when we updated our, um, master plan in twenty nineteen, and so, um, just so that you guys know developed acres, it's five point six eight, six acres of parkland per one thousand residents. Um, last time we presented this, we were, I think, at thirty thousand people, or at thirty-five, and now it's a hundred and ninety-six acres. That means we're following time, yeah. And a really good chat team of founders with the national average, actually ten point eight acres for one thousand. And our classification should actually be eleven point three, but, okay, but we're at five point six acres, but we are behind the national average. Um, and then the actual developed acres, we have a hundred and fifty right now. And then I just put a fat four point two nine acres. So we're forty-five, almost forty-six acre short. We're in the park short, yeah, you're right. And that's part of the ninety-two acres that we have. If we develop that ninety-two acres, we'd be that seven acres for one thousand.
What are the other forty thousand acres?
But we just the forty acres?
Sorry, forty acres, yeah, so. I I I saw, I saw comma instead of a dot, so what what are the additional forty acres that?
Not a bunch of like little undeveloped stuff, but then you have the bill, is it built?
Yeah, it's it's in here, but it's it's not kind of a developed.
Yeah, it's all about, so, the bill, you got that, the extra acre that legacy. What else?
Sure, we're talking about ninety-two.
Our goal is that residents, where possible, have access within a mile or less, they can walk to a to a park. And then the overall mix, we want it to be seventy percent active and thirty percent passive, but we're currently at fifty percent active. For those who don't know, the active is where we can organize, have our organization sports app, it's like through Jensen Park. Um, with that said, we were given a goal to increase opportunities with the the parks that we actually have, so we wanted to show that we did that. Um, at Jensen Park, we were able to, uh, bring in a floating dock. Trails, oh, this was also brought in, not only trail, we did like, um, along Gentile, but when developments come in, they're bringing in trails, which we're gonna have to maintain, so, but we are getting a lot of trails, the ones that are analog. And hopefully all the way to the causeway. Um, the B M X pump track. Also bringing a restroom to the equestrian park and above the pump track area, uh, we've got a parking lot too there. Stoker, we've increased the open space, while removing like the pavilions, so we can actually use the programming there. We now have tennis courts with lights refurbished, and then our two sand volleyball courts with lights, so people, we have ladies and throughout, additional trees. Um, Founders Park was a big one, people didn't have enough opportunity to walk completely around the parks, adding that really helped. And then we added two pickleball courts, the community center. You wouldn't have thought it was a big deal, but I promise you.
What I think you need to take credit for, that you don't, is in the past five, ten years, um, there is now a par, a restroom in every park with a playground. And I thought that was huge, because I remember as a parent with young kids, that was frustrating, not out bathrooms in parks, and I won't tell you what the kids did in those parks.
We know. They still do it.
But I I do think that's a huge win for the city, that we we we, the services in our parks has vastly improved from the time you've been the director of this department, so.
We'll give the head over here to.
To you, to you and your team.
Yeah, to the crew.
One thing I love too is the, uh, the Jensen improvements, I think including the dock, a lot of our trails. Uh, uh, we've funded partially through grants. And the B M X track is made possible through a partnership with the, basically volunteer work through the B M X.
Wasn't the shoreline, uh, that that also a debt to a grant? The shoreline Jensen part. And that looks amazing now.
Yeah. And that's, and that's just one portion, they've actually wanted that all the way there.
We have an open season in Jensen Lodge.
There are ducks that can't fly away.
You're in public. Community center uses, we just want, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but you can just see all the different uses that we have, um, for the community center that are available, that's something that was um, in our vision statement, there's always a lot going on in the community center, which we always do. Pact, always pact, there's always something, there's always something going on, so. The next one is there are a wide variety of programs provided by the Parks and Recreation Department. Again, we have program offerings that we offer, um, with the the larger ones, and also smaller ones, and then we have contracted offerings. Which is great, we can expand on, because we don't, we take the money, they do the work, we make a profit, so that's always really really good, and then there are special events that we offer. Um, you can see Jordan's changed the Scarecues for you.
Is it Scarecues or Scary Ques?
Scare.
Scarecues, okay. Excited to hear it.
Well, also, besides our special events, we do, we're in charge of like outside events that come into the city. Um, we oversee that, and we have forty-three events, whether it's triathlons, the lantern festival, bigger weddings, those kind of things. The Syracuse gadget, all that, we are the liaison for the Arts Council, and then the Illumination is a big event that can do. Which we we love that, because they use the park and we help them out, we don't have to, it's a big event, so it's great.
We said the lantern festival, or something.
Yes, it's been, we have that every year, we actually had two last year, but, um, we'd like to keep it to one.
Is that a fire hazard?
No, they do. Yeah, it's on the water, and they have, they don't actually mind them. And then they remove the lanterns at night before they. Yeah, before they, before they. Illumination scares me a little bit.
Gets wild over there.
I don't enjoy them that much, a little less than over there. Vision statement three is the programs offered by the Parks and Recreation Department are financially self-sustaining. So, um, we every, we actually, we're supposed to do this every two to four years. Um, but we have found that with the the cost changing so much, and prices of everything going up all the time, we'll budget and then it's not, so we've been doing these cost analysis, um, after each program. Every time we have a program, we make sure that we're bringing in the money we need to raise it, and that's why you guys have been raising rules the last um, little bit, and you can see there's the mathematician over here can. Anyway. These are the programming, financial analysis, these are what we've had in the last four years. As you can always tell over here on the the right side, the total we've never been under, we've always been able to pay for all our programs, even though we've had some that's been up and down. The overall cost has always, we've always been.
I want to kind of learn this, because eight years ago, when I was first on here, we did challenge courses to make these a cost effective case, we pay for all our programs, and it started with collectively, we made that number. But if you notice, and I noticed, and I am so proud of this department, I'm like, you are awesome. Now each one actually does, you know, it's paid for itself. That to have come to that point, when, when, before I was here, and we got in, they were giving no support, and everything was under uh, was was like being subsidized, I'm just thrilled. I, there has been a Herculean effort, and they deserve huge kudos for it.
Thank you. Um, the twenty twenty-four, which is the yellow, that's just up to this point, we don't have our soccer tools, or our fall soccer, spring soccer tools, sorry, and our baseball that will actually go up also. Those are our main programs. This is our category two, which is our smaller programs, and then our contract programs, and they always make us, uh, a profit, not a large profit, but a profit.
Who's camp series?
Well, that is, um, one that we do for the kids, we do like an arts and crafts, bring in, um, for like two and a half hours, and we play games with them. It's a cheap babysitting. Cheap babysitting, but they really love it, and we have four sessions, and as soon as we open it up, it's go.
I bet.
We have, I think, if we had more time in the day to do it, I think we had forty, for each session, we had forty, um, on the witness. So if we have more space and more things, we would be able to.
That's mom's hollering at you. Do you charge, do you charge more for the non-residents?
We do, non-residents is is an extra fifteen dollars for our programs, so they're, the.
Like this, you know, the citizens to have that.
Yes.
Option to get in, to get in.
Yeah, and there's gonna be a time, because we're getting where we might either have to cap or whatever, that we might have to do something where Syracuse citizens get this time to sign up only, and then.
Which is really raised there.
Yep, raise the non-resident. Yeah, we have a lot of people that are on the border of like Clearfield. You know, late in, they're like, we're just like one street over.
You have room for like ten kids, but they, those kids got super high extra fees, like, wow, that went up a lot, maybe not. If it were fifteen extra bucks, then okay, you know, but still, it's still kids' sports. Still got like, some people have eight kids trying to pay for all these things. Yeah, I know, but Syracuse. Well, I'm not saying I shouldn't, but I don't hate me despite too much.
A ton of kids of our own. Yeah.
A lot of kids, yeah.
And then here's our participation numbers, as you can see, they're just continually to rise, we're staying right at um, the level again, you don't see spring soccer, and that's our a big one. The only one that we're seeing a decline in, which we'll talk about here, and it's just like it is, our tackle football program. And then the same for our category twos.
I'm gonna make one point, the Arts Council is a sponsor of summer camp as well, and after the, so three years ago, they were able to take more. They've actually had to cap it sooner, because they can't get enough help, I mean, parental help, we have to have enough, so many adults for kids. But they've had more than double the interest in their summer program, just like they have Camp Syracuse. Uh, it's just a matter of it, there's gotta be a certain level of adult circulation.
And space.
And space.
Cause they're always having to try to find when we're not doing something, so. And then we wanted to show you the, um, the net revenue that we're bringing, well, not net, the revenue that we're bringing in from the community center. As you can see, the blue is what we're bringing in, but then we also, um, do the waivers for like the Arts Council and, um, Pilt Guild, the C D C, those ones, that's what you're seeing in the gray. Um, again, twenty twenty-four is just up to the to date, well, we'll get up there for the rest of the year. And then you can see the parks revenue is the same, just continue to climb on there. And our, our, um, fees are very low, especially like in the parks type of stuff. So like, see that, and you know, how much we make in that, it's like twenty-five dollars for four hours for, you know, certain pavilion, you stay booked. We stay booked, but we also, you know, we're gonna wanna bring back our, um, athletic field uh, policy and, um, revisit those fees, because we're getting to where we were, when we started it, we wanted to give people a break, that we're renting them for a long piece of, like long period of time, it is getting to the point where, I don't know if we're even making the money, need to do an analysis about, analysis on that, because when I'm here for so long, it's getting like eight dollars an hour for a field, and that is cheap. Where our cities to, just to the east, Clearfield is charging you know, forty dollars an hour for a field, and people are still renting them, and we're, you know, down to eight dollars on some of our fields after so many hours that they rent, so we wanna do an analysis of them bringing that back, so you guys can look at that, and we can make sure that we're covering all of our costs, but then also making money for our.
Yeah, that's the need, the need for athletic fields is real.
Ask you, the, with the increase in population in Syracuse over the last five years, how's that affected the sports environment over there?
You're about to show us what your, uh, your person per capita is, is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so that's, that's the whole, the whole thing like Chad said, we, we don't have enough space to run our own programs, let alone all the programs that people don't wanna come in, and we've had juggle, we've let lacrosse have been using it, uh, the youth league used it, rugby now wants it. Um, soccer, on soccer all the time, there's always soccer that wants some kind of field space for them, so.
Improving council members, it's unfortunate, but every year, then we get complaints of people who say, the city's not providing me enough space I can rent. Really, that's not our job. I mean, uh, to be fair, our kids come first, our own programs come first. And we are kind of a building, we're at the point where if we don't build more, we won't be able to even let anyone rent.
So when you get your mouse and screen, which you know.
You will.
Then you can recite that, and tell them that. Then you can recite that and tell them that and you will, I mean, summer, you'll all, but really at a particular time.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, they all keep saying things like, my league is so important, or I have a top team that's so important. And you, as a taxpayer, you owe me a field. Just know that we can't. We, we owe our own programs first. And that is a real, it happens every year and I feel bad because we just don't have those options.
And we have done, we have done our best to like said, jigsaw puzzle and, and give people as much as we can. Um, but you also have to look at, we have to, you know, give our fields rest. We can work on them and they can, you know, be maintained and stuff. So there's, there's a very um balance that we have to work out and do.
And you guys do a great job on maintaining those fields. Over the last just two years that I've been on the council, oh my gosh, a couple of those parks have come so, they're nice.
I will say that as far as athletes go, um, I, we've gone to other places and those fields are just downright dangerous.
Yeah, the holes.
My, my daughter played on a field and I won't tell you where it was and what city, but she came home and just shin splint, like she, she was hurt bad. After playing on that field. And, and there is something to be said for a well-maintained field versus playing in a patch of dirt.
Rock, hard, patch of dirt, yeah.
Yeah, she, she, it took her a week to recover after that game.
I believe that. We take a lot of pride in that. It hasn't always been like that in the city, but we take a lot of pride that, that you can say on those fields. And uh, some people come into the city that they, they complain all the time, so we appreciate that.
That's safety kids.
It is safe, it is. Okay, so the foot pro- football program, both of you that ha- are not on the council, we had this discussion a couple of years ago, youth conference came in. And they wanted to bring in and start a program. Um, it, it costs more and, but. Um, there's different things that we offer that they offer and we're not gonna get into that, but youth conference has kind of taken over a lot of kids down here. You know, Clearfield, us, Clinton's no longer gonna have a program. Um, they're starting to kind of filter into uh Leighton also. So it's always a concern to ours and part of, you know, this, the deep side is that we analyze our programs and if there's any that are gonna, that are having problems or we perceive, we let you guys know. And that's kind of what we want to do um today because we are declining and football is an expensive sport to um, to upkeep. And like our, this is our highest registration fee, that's a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty-five, depending on what league you are in. Um, youth league is charging, I believe, two ninety-five. That's if you're the early bird, it's three something if you're not.
It's always expensive, yeah.
Well, that's why we want to be able to keep our program because we can make it affordable for the kids. But at some point, it's doesn't come affordable for the city to be around. So that's why we wanna keep it going. We wanna see where we're at this year. Um, we wanna see how many kids come back. We've heard there's gonna be some come back that left last year. But if we can keep seeing this decline, this is definitely going to have to be a discussion that we have of the command, uh, staff and council that. It might be a program that we're gonna have to let go. The equipment is super expensive. We, when we first started, it was like sixty dollars for a helmet. We're now at a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a helmet. Yeah, so we rotate ours out, but it's, you know, for the fees that we're charging and the money that we're getting, you know, we're only gonna be able to do ten or twelve, but we rotate out. Um, so it becomes a safety concern too. And that's just for the helmet, that's not for the pads, the new pants and everything that we offer. It's an expensive sport.
I think I'm okay with this one, the youth league.
Well, I'm gonna just say that if we do get to the point where you have to decide whether this gets cut. I'm gonna say that we have to at that time also examine whether we allow those fields to be rented for the sport. Because this is the most damaging. They practice in one spot and just tear up a section of field over and over and over and it is hard. To get them to restore and it does, you know, whereas a different sport where they're running all over and not just like in one concentrated spot. It's easier for the fields to recover, so.
Is football all in one concentrated spot? I'm not clear on that.
Mine is scrimmage, where the ball is, they practice at the same. You know, they don't practice up and down field, they practice in the park right next to my house. You can look at them all the time.
I mean, I wonder, this is where mindfulness comes into play. I wonder if the coaches even have that thought in their head.
I have asked the ones near my house.
Like, can you guys?
Can you move over? They're like, nope, this is our spot. I'm like, okay.
So when they're our program, like we, we'll go out and we'll tell the coaches, you have to move.
Keep the mindfulness up here, don't use our field.
Yeah, and we, we've asked, like last year, the youth league, we ended up having enough for seventeen, I believe it was, for them to practice on. Um, it's important for the kids to have a place to play and we would never do any, do anything that would damage our fields and make it something we can't, but you're right there, we have to look at that.
And I think what, what becomes difficult is because the limited space is available.
You get three teams in a small park.
Yeah, and there's not a whole lot of, yeah, it makes sense. Um, so yes, the practice sites, they, they, they get hammered, absolutely.
And did you, you just said that Clearfield's giving away with the program?
So Clearfield already did away with the program.
We just switched to the youth league.
Which is why, our, the WFL, which is why the youth league came down, so kind of, but Clinton, they, their numbers have dropped so much that they have decided not to do their program.
And Leighton?
Leighton still has their program, Caveville, West Point.
But youth, youth league is, is working to expand into them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Try.
So, so we're clear on, on the differentiation there. It's not, it's not that Clearfield went to the youth league, it's just that they're not providing football.
Yeah.
Youth, youth league is just the only organization operating in the area.
That this is.
Yeah.
The thing that makes it hard, at least to have a city program with the youth league is that the youth league is based off of school boundaries. Which don't necessarily align with city boundaries. And so you, if, if you go with the youth league, for example, that means now you have a lot of Clearfield kids that are.
You know, our program.
That are in our program. And so now, our fields are being used for anybody in that league instead of Syracuse residents. Now, it's just hard to work through that.
And that's quite, that's caused quite the stir amongst the football community, you know, and, and, and that's where really the, the league that we've been associated with the last, ever since. Uh, Preston, I have been involved, is starting to decline as a whole.
It needs to be more training.
I'm sure that brand injury.
We have so many Clearfield that are in the R and so many Mars and in the Clearfield, not just.
It feels, it feels like it's his sixes. I agree. I'm just saying that's why it's hard to.
Take a little of yours, you take a little of ours and we'll just call it good.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Well, part of the problem is, if let's say West Point, they don't wanna give up their program and we have our program and then he's running the program and then. That's why if you go to the youth league, it needs to be a parent association that runs it. And then the safety, you just step out and let them, let them do it. And then we, then we'll, we'll evaluate and see, just like we did this past year, how many fields that we can accommodate them. They go to West Point, get some from them, then we go to Clearfield and get some from them. We'll, we get to that.
But do we need to have something in the rentals that specifies that, look, if, if, if after your, that there is requirement that you move your practice sites on a week-to-week basis?
We're gonna charge you a fee.
Or, or, or if that, if you don't, then your, your rates go up.
And I think, I think with the uptake in uh the demand on the athletic field usage, we have to become more stringent on. And putting together an agreement amongst the groups that we're, we're gonna be coming, we're gonna be inspecting. And we already tried to formulate that. Um, but it just is, it's so in between our programs and our leagues right now. That a lot of times, then you have these pop-up teams that will just show up and use our facilities as well. It's usually in the evening, so we don't have uh the staff to really police it, makes it challenging. And so that's, that's another challenge.
I feel like all of those things, like, respect our filter, don't use it. And if fields are that hard to get and that hard to rent. And you're told once, like, oh, you, we didn't do what we were supposed to, now we can't use our fields, but don't think you're gonna mess up again.
It's hard to police it though.
Yeah.
We had a guy having a soccer clinic in one of our parks without permission for years. Just, he'd show up and say, oh, I, this is my park for this clinic. And kicking our citizens out even sometimes. He, he had no permission.
They were just like, with average time there and then show up. Because all the other cities are having a hard time too, so they're not allowing people to just pop up and play.
We will take you a certificate with uh.
Was that like a trespassing issue after that? Like, with, with it being a public park and it being during the open hours, but you have to reserve to put on a function, would it be considered a trespassing issue then?
Yeah, that's our.
As we look to of Parks and Rec.
Yes, it could be. But um, yeah, that's, that's kind of the issue that we have. We, we want people to be able to use the parks if the family showing up or.
Yeah.
You know, kids just playing. It's when it's, we've got it as one, it's an organized sport.
They're making money.
Making money off of it. You're practicing, people are charging and you're coming and practicing on our field so that you can go play on them.
Yeah.
And you need to, it's an organized event.
So this is where I, I agree. I think you guys, I think that now's a great time to go through and look at our rental contracts and prices and everything. Let's figure out a good way forward on this.
And uh, and another dynamic in the fall is your flag football and the fall soccer are both increasing in this place. So they're, they, they're requiring more space. So there may be less and less to actually.
Bunch of kids, all these kids we got going on out here.
Well, if we didn't have tackle football, because in the fall, like we told you, there is not a space available to practice. There just isn't with all that we have. Um, but if, if we didn't have tackle football, if that's where, what it comes to, we have baseball fields are open that, we have people always wanting to rent our fields for, to be fall baseball. Or to put on some tournaments or a hall program. So there's always something that we can do. And so that's what we're looking at. It's like, just provide different.
And we need more field space.
We need more field space, for sure, but it is what it is, you know, right? But yes, we need more.
So, so I guess on this one, I, I guess, I, I'm okay if we wanna go to the youth league and just.
We wanna see, yeah, we wanna see.
You're gonna go one more year?
Yeah, and we'll see. If, if we, we do signups in May and if it's really, really low and it's not gonna be, then we would come back and say, they could open it up and we could say, you know what, you're gonna have to go to youth league. But we wanna be able to provide it as, as long as we can and it's still, we're still able to pay for it. Because it is, it's different than, than you need.
Well, and I, I think where we, we still provide the, the flag football, which I think is safer personally.
For the young, it's for sure.
Even for the older kids.
I mean, when you start hitting your heads together, it's already a safety hazard. So I feel like, I'm a Jordan on that one.
You know, there's more concussions in women's soccer than there is in. It is. Yeah, I, I see where you're going. Okay, sorry. All right. We're excited. Hey, Syracuse City has a well-organized park improvement and made this plan to outline needed improvements and ensures well-maintained park equipment.
Is that a picture or new?
That, that was purposely put in there.
Nice.
How nice that looks.
Very nice.
It wasn't put in and then a week later, we already saw stuff coming up. So it looked, it looks very good. We're really happy about that. Here's our maintenance plan. We just wanted to show you the different um maintenance plans that we, that we do in each, the parks and then in the community center. Um, and then you guys all know our five-year capital improvement plan. That's the, the working document. We're changing that all the time. We're actually talking with the. There before this, this time when Chad and I talked about it, to look at putting in and then pulling some stuff down that might be a, a better use, so. It's a, it's a document that's always changing, but we have. So this dog park addition, that, it's been.
I know, yeah, but I just heard from a whole bunch of different lease parks that have dog parks, that it drastically increased their call load. So that's something we should probably look into. Soundboxing gets more calls to the dog park than they do than your regular day.
Like dog bites?
Well, people fighting.
Oh.
Dog owners fighting, so we should probably look into.
Your dog bit my dog?
We'll get fox and gloves and tie him to the fence.
I mean, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
So I have differences here.
That's called a show up wall.
Yeah, but we call that a cowboy wall.
Is there anything you wanted to add about? Um, these are, we just wanted to show, I don't wanna go over all of them, but we wanted just to show uh how busy we've been in, these are the maintenance side of that. We showed you the things earlier that, that, you know, added to it, the added opportunities, but these are the actual maintenance and repairs that we've been making along in the parks. Um, within supervision, so we just wanted to, to show you those, you know, this overall. The only one we wanna tell you is the park maintenance facility.
We'll, we'll be done someday.
Get in there, guys.
You've been saying that for a year.
Well, it was supposed to be done a year ago. We're on the year mark. If you don't think that that's really frustrating, especially.
They're gonna pay us to go.
No, they're starting, but it's getting made. Okay, um, the future considerations, personnel, update, Parks and Child master plan, our community center master plan expansion, and then we've gotten enough out of the whole. Going on personnel, just wanted to give you like an idea of what our um work chart is, what our organizing unit and our department is. This, you guys have probably already know this, we talked about it in the um gold retreat of what we're asking for. Um, the park maintenance worker, and then we'll show you here, like Jordan said, we'll show you here. When we start adding things, you just have to remember that every time you add something, it's, it's a resource that we need to help maintain those. And I just wanna say upfront, we are so grateful for what the council has done the last few years. You cannot even tell you, you guys have really put some effort into getting us. People, when we were putting this together, I was looking back at our twenty eighteen and I went into Chad's office and I was like, I'm so sorry, like, I can't, how did you even do? But, you know, everybody, we were all asking him, in, in the park staff to do, there was like four of them, with the same stuff. So to be where we're at now, we're very grateful, but we don't wanna get behind these while we're there. So just keep that in mind that we're, we're gonna be having a seven-acre expansion of a cemetery and additional trails and the dog park and BMX and. Well, you know, Davis, the West Davis Porter exits and all those surrounding areas and the trails that come with, uh, with it. And then you just have to, you know, if, if we do approve getting a regional park or even the first phase, when you think about those things, just remember that their staff has to come with those things. So before you vote, just know that those, those things. Same thing with the coordinator, you saw all the numbers, we're, we're at our max. We wanna offer more programs, but we just are not um able to do that. And, and our, you know, our manager is act- acting like they're coordinator, he wants to be able to actually. Sue the role of, in, in the manager you'll be. Um, with the park maintenance facility opening up, uh, whether it's part-time or full-time, we'd like to have an admin assistant on there, which would then take away, take the cemetery responsibilities for um. The cemetery center, they're not really allowed to get the, the grades, but the cemetery affects the needs. Um, and, and then overseeing like our rentals for our fields, they, it's not, so they're right there on the same building. So those are things that we're asking for.
Like with every building, you also have to have a receptionist to see if you just walk through the door. Because that seems like it's necessary. You know, and people just standing there with their round like, we're gonna go out.
We have to lock the door, but. That's the giraffe, you walk in with that door, so that people just step off. I'm gonna let Chad give this, you know, this information if you think that.
Yeah, I mean, this is just, it's kind of another uh comparison of, that allow you to see just how we sit with each park and cities. And um what acreage we are able to maintain our whole time equivalents. Um, so we rely a lot during our, our, what we like to call our girl and see them, we, we rely on a lot on senior employees. And as, it's a cheap buying dimension, these last few years have been very difficult to even hire individuals period. And so on average, through the last five, six years, we, we received less than fifty percent of hours worked of what we need for an FTV. And so we, in return, that puts the, you know, the stress and the workload on all of our, you know, permanent full-time employees. And so it just starts to drag you down a little bit. Um, we're, we're still the closest uh city to us, almost a acre ahead of us or less than. For their full-time employee, I'm sure they're having the same issues with seasonal staff and, and, and everything, but. We, yeah, we, this is just there where we struggle, but it, like Preston has mentioned, we, we've been very fortunate that there has been some dedication towards our department. As goes back, yeah, so. Um, again, the national standards, you know, we, we, we like to see where we're at. We're, we're sitting at about seventeen FTVs um for our acreage and it's, it's suggested to have about thirty-one FTVs. So, um, but yeah, that, that's, it's just, it comes with the territory, we get it. Um, but if we wanna continue to provide, uh, provide that level of service, that our Parks and Asher Plan is uh, you know, committed to and dedicated to them. And yet, it's just, it has to be, have to continue to, if we could, yeah.
Like I said, this past season was like the first time that they, it didn't feel like we were drowning. Well, it's a burnout number. Yeah, but we, we didn't feel like we were drowning. It was, it was actually, it was a season and you feel like, okay, it wasn't.
What made the difference? What made the difference?
Well, we, uh, you guys have allowed us to do some of the full-time with the, the seasonal, you know, money. And made them full-time, because once the season ended in August, well, the, the season goes to November, but people, we have our seasonal, they leave in August, the first couple weeks of August. So then that, all of that work plus, the, the work that they already do as full climbers had to go on.
Because, because you had additional staff.
Yeah, and they were actually able, you know, to take some time off without us, like, oh, we actually can't take time off, you know, we won't be able to do this, so we are appreciative, but. Just remember that as things are coming on, we have to keep that up, yeah, there's still work to do. Moving on. Okay, so the next thing we wanna do is update our parks and trails master plan. It's coming up here, did you guys know that it was last updated in July of twenty nineteen? The issue with that is that we've had a lot of growth since then, and so none of, and none of our maps are updated. Um, you know, so where our parks are at, there's, now you have where one of our, we could have got acreage for it, was where the temple's at. So it just needs to be updated, we need to, you know, look at that and get that updated. Um, the trail master plan, I was talking to Noah, it was last updated in February of twenty twelve. Now they do have a, the regional active transportation plan that was completed and had little things that. For Syracuse in there that we can build on, but our own trails master plan has not been updated since twenty twelve, and we know how different.
If there's reason to combine the two?
We could, yeah.
I, I mean.
Yeah, which is probably a good idea.
Yeah, and for impact fees, we can use it, impact fees for both. So it makes sense to combine.
And that goes to the next thing, because, yeah, that goes to the next thing with the community center. Is we have never developed and offered a master plan for the community center either. Um, and as we continue to grow, we need to look at how we can grow the community center. And we're not saying that we're wanting to build a community center next year and maybe that, but there needs to be a plan in place. Um, to do that, now whether that's part of the parks master plan, we have a little bit of a snippet in there about the community center. But we don't have, we haven't set down a look of what we actually would need, and to do that, you know, we've talked with, with Brody. Do those kind of things, when we update, like you said, we can update the, um, impact fee facility plan. That can also include the community center, so that we can start putting that money away. So that we can eventually, um, expand the community center, um, like we would like to. Yeah, as, as, like, as you guys know, like we were talking before, the community center is always full. We have, now we have pickleball in there that would be there every single day if they could be there. We are sharing space with like aerobics, the gyms and the aerobics, um. And aerobic classes are in the gym, which ends up being kind of an issue. We have a very small weight room with no locker room where we could, if we're wanting to look at people to actually come in and use the facility, they'll lose things, and we. To eventually look at down the road, so. Um, what we want to ask you guys with that is to, to consider the property that's out here would be set aside, so for that expansion of the community center. Now, if not, say, let's build a community center there, but what we were thinking is, there's a possibility of extending the community center onto the. Uh, south side, and then extend the parking lot.
It's like, uh, a little over.
We're just sticking away from.
I know, it's just enough, some kids will go ripping out.
Had dirt's been there a long time.
Yeah.
It actually moves around every now and then.
It's been a while.
But if we have that, then looking forward when we're putting the, the, the master plan together, we can kind of design and go from there, so that's what we're looking at. And then we wanted you just to take the, you know, as the budget's coming up, we asked for this last year. Um, and I know that there's a whole lot of priorities, but that HVAC system that's up there, we are still getting leakage. All over the community center, and we just put sixty thousand dollars in those floors. The only thing.
They are nice floors.
They're beautiful floors. Yeah, and I mean, it literally has been there since the building was open eighteen years ago, the leaky. And they have never been able to come up with, the roof's been ins- inspected and repaired multiple times. Um, we have someone tell me that it's gotta be, it's not sealed properly or something.
And when, when talking would do, it's the problem, you know?
You know, and, and I think that came and, and tried talking and, and stuff.
Kind of took time to actually find out.
It's coming from.
And that's the problem, is we've done everything where it's about the point where these need to be replaced anyways, that if we, you know, replace them, then we don't.
Is it the roof or the HVAC?
Well, we're thinking it's the HVAC, because we've done every, uh.
Seems very related.
And it's right where the vents are, the, yeah.
Does it only leak when the HVAC is on?
No.
When it rains.
But when it rains and goes sideways, so they're saying it's getting in.
I mean, say we're not solving the.
No, but I'm just saying. No, we're done. Next question, if you have any.
We should fix your HVAC problem.
For the leaky.
Those were very expensive floors to ruin over a leaky roof, like, we should have fixed that first.
It's like, we tried.
I know, I know, I know.
So I'm gonna move us on to, I'm just wanting to share with you, there's some of the results that came from our retreat, our mini-retreat. I think that there was some really good data, so go to your up.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm gonna maybe save some time, assuming we, I'll put the, the slides in, in the packet. But, uh, we took this spreadsheet that we got from the dots, like, from the dots to the retreat and analyzed everything.
But you could decipher the dots.
It was actually really useful.
Yeah, um, may, maybe I'll pull up some of these slides.
Maybe it wasn't as fun as you have in other exercises.
I like the team building, that's always funny. You get to learn the people.
I'm sure.
I thought there were some good moments there. Alright, too long, we're done.
Any questions? Same, that was fast, right? Yeah, so, so a couple things, just to kind of explain, some of these are, are a little general, so this first slide. When you look at all the different ways we, all the different angles we, we've used in, in our, uh, retreat to look at things. These are the items that tended to float to the top most frequently. And so this, um, this support for the three thousand west commercial development. In almost every category that it appeared, it rose to the top. And so, if, what's that, what that's telling us is that this is your, basically your priority one A. Um, and all the other things are secondary to it. Um, these other, these other items tend to float around the top, but not always in the top, and that we can get through that. Um. So, one thing I noticed, uh, when we talk about general support, basically what these slides are saying are. Was there simple support for that item or not? Yes or no? Okay, so if it, if four or five of you said, yes, I support this, yes or no, then it got on the far left. If, if a majority of you, three, um, then it got on the second column, and then if there's some support, but not a majority, that's, that's the far right column. Now, when we go to the next slide, which is, is, it's not a question of do you have support, yes or no, it's. What is that support for? And that's what this slide tells you is, um, which ones had a majority that supported that item for that priority. Okay, so priority one means most of you thought that these items are the top priorities. Priority two, most of you thought that that was the second priority. And priority three, most of you thought that that would be the third priority. And so it's looking at it from two different angles. Um, uh, a few things, as, as we started filtering through, when you look at it by cost. Um, something shook out, so you said it was, yes, it's a priority, but then when you look at it from a different angle of. You know, by, by the cost category, then something's actually filtered out. And that's, that's what I, I covered in the, in the memo, there are a few things that I think that. We, we kind of need more conversations, um, to really flesh out what it is you meant by, by how you voted. One of them is on station thirty-two, the new fire station, right? It's among the top priorities, um, however, the willingness to staff it was mixed. And it was actually, uh, most of you felt like that was a good, um, uh, a good item to partially fund. And so, uh, we, we probably need more discussion on that and what that actually looks like, how, how the operations of that station. Would work with a partially funded staff, and, um, you know, different options of how to, how to operate out of that building. Um, if we were to, to go that route, which, um, we can have discussion about that, and Aaron can help solve that. Uh, another item that, that I saw is with parks. Um, with wrap tax and park impact fee revenue, it was very clear in the data. That the five-year parks plan is the priority. The regional park phase one and the cemetery expansion were second and third priorities. And, and so when we get into what money is available. You know, some, the, the cemetery or the regional park phase one may shake off the table because there's not enough money. So, those, that's, I think, a discussion in and of itself that needs to happen, because there are some. I'll call them logistical issues with regional park phase one, in that the school district is building their school. And one of the fields we were gonna partner on, where essentially they pay for the field, but we maintain it and we get to use it. And so, um, uh, the regional park was also, um, a majority of me felt like the regional park. Is a good, uh, item to partially fund, um, phase one, so it'd be like a phase one A and a phase one B, if that's how it shook out. So, um, again, uh, I think more discussion should probably have on that. Um, another one, uh, there was a lot of support to get the vehicles and equipment for park and rec and fireworks. Um, the issue with the staffing though, when we prioritize staffing, the park and rec staffing fell off to the, to the side, so we. Just, just sort of clear those, those vehicles are only for the new staff.
You also get so many stickers and threw everybody off the staff being in there too, so it's like, do we want more cops? Or do we want some people to take care of the park? Like, you made us this hot.
That's like reality.
For that, the cops aren't on this list, it's just that.
We're, we're just trying to reflect reality there.
I know, but you didn't reflect reality, we were explaining it with the dots.
No, I was, yeah, we were.
This will get more discussion, this is not a, this is just kind of the overview of what we gathered from this, this point.
Do you know, when you go to be a columnist and he says A or B, and then he says B or C, and he says D or C, F, guess why?
Guess why?
She loves the dogs.
But yeah, go ahead, Jordy.
The, the last thing, um, on, on this are items that weren't on the priorities. But they are issues we, we do in fact have to address, well, down to the recycling pro- uh, program. Um, that's gonna be mandated, so even though it wasn't a priority that we, you know, fund, to fund that or, or deal with it, we really don't have a choice.
You think that's why it wasn't a priority? Kind of like the farmer's market, it's gonna be super cheap, so it wasn't a priority because we knew we could do it.
It gave you an extra dock, right?
Yeah, it gave you an extra dock, you have to play on that, that's why we moved him to the side, or I, we moved him to the side.
And then, and then, yeah, the last one, just our five-year rodent infrastructure plan, um, and to examine that and make sure. You're comfortable with where we are on our ability to fund those projects.
Okay, so I'm going to build off those last couple of points, because, um, after some discussion, I think that. What I'd like to do, and I warned you in the retreat, that I'd like to start recruiting some help from council to. Flesh out our opportunities and figure out what our options are. To that, I'd like to assign a couple of task leaders and say, I'm, I'm asking you to. Work with staff and try to find out what all the options are, we could just leave it to staff, but one of the problems is, is we're always adding, adding tasks. So if we, what I'm asking you to do is do some of the work, so that we're not just adding extra work. To some people who've already got a lot built up, so, um, if that's okay with you. I would assign a task leader, this is a research role, all decisions will come back to all five. This is not somewhere one person goes out, makes a decision.
Yeah, Bill, you're not making Zars.
Well, I am not, I am not specific, I'm asking you, I, I'd like to call it a research leader task, research leader.
Jen wants to meet the dog Zar.
I know, I know.
The dog Zar.
Okay, okay, let's, make it back here, so unless you would like me to take this to another meeting where we can have discussion. I'd like to begin, just kind of make this in silence if you're okay with that, because really, it's, it's helping the research, it's not, the decisions will be made in this. Meeting, the research that's gathered will be presented in a meeting like this, are we good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so my first one is, building off what Brody said, I wanna assign Jordan with a task of researching our recycling options. Um, there's probably more options than we can gather just by a couple of emails, so I need somebody to really dig into that. And so I've assigned Jordan that.
We're all gonna get a PowerPoint presentation, we're excited.
The second one I have not already approached, but I think is, is willing. Jen mentioned in the retreat, she liked the farmer's market, so could I ask you to be the task researcher?
Absolutely.
Find out what our options are, I have gathered a little bit of information, but I can share, but really, you can run with it. There will be more, but those are the two that, you know, it's tough to get everything done, and you guys are a great resource, so. As long as there's no line velocity between you, I'm gonna start having down some assignments, is that good?
You guys wanna fight over the farmer's market?
No, they might want to fight over recycling.
Followed by a meaner.
Can you break down the list for an over-energ, or just a star or a red?
Okay, so, I appreciate that. I hope that throughout this meeting, we have some counterpoint, but I hope everybody leaves happy, because. I think that we didn't, like, nobody, like, was it anybody else's throat, and I love that.
Nobody threw anything.
Yeah, but we did have differing opinions, and that's okay, that's healthy, that's how we get things worked out, I think that. Some of the things that I didn't agree with will be the total opposite way, and I find that, because that's where our democracy works. So, with that said, I am going to call on you to adjourn.